Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberating and just as for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community, especially this week for Al Boscov. Thank you. Call please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here. Dispense with reading of the minutes.
Third order, three A minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission meeting held January 18, 2017.
Are there any comments, if not received and filed?
Three B minutes of the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held January 18, 2017.
Are there any comments, if not received and filed?
Three C minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission meeting held January 18, 2017.
Are there any comments, if not received and filed?
Three D minutes of the composite pension board meeting held January 18, 2017.
Are there any comments, if not received and filed?
Three E agenda for the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held February 15, 2017.
Are there any comments, if not received and filed? Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Uh, yes, I have, I have two announcements. Uh, the NEPA Emerald Society is going to have their annual St. Patrick's Day gathering on Friday, March 3rd. Uh, it's gonna be held at the FOP Lodge Number Two, which is 401 Railroad Avenue, Scranton. It's gonna start at six and it's gonna end at 10:00 PM. There'll be Irish step dancers, bagpipers, Dan the Piano Man, there'll be plenty of entertainment. The cost is thirty dollars a person, which includes dinner, which is catered by Castaldi's Market. Uh, it's a BYOB event. There are tickets at the door, or you can contact Mari at 570-604-3605. And secondly, the NEPA Emerald Society is having a second event. This one is going to be at the South Side Bowl, which is 125 Beach Street, and that's gonna be this Saturday, February 18th. Registration starts at noon. Bowling starts at 12:30. The cost is twenty dollars a bowler, and that's gonna include two games and rentals. All ages are welcome. You can sign up as an individual or bring a team. Again, if you want more information, you can contact Mari Walsh at 570-604-3605. Thank you.
Friday, February 17th is Winter in the City. We'll be held at Posh from 5:30 to 8:00 PM. Tickets are twenty dollars at the door, and proceeds benefit the projects of Scranton tomorrow. Uh, this Monday, February 20th, City Hall will be closed in observance of President's Day, but DPW will be working on Monday. Refuge and recycling collections will be on schedule next week. In addition, all Colts buses will be running on the regular schedule on Monday. Uh, and just one, one announcement before our meeting starts. Uh, as you are aware, we did receive answers from Sewer Authority Director Shrive yesterday, last night, answering questions that council had presented in January. Uh, as of today, we thank Director Shrive for those answers, but we also request that he attend a public caucus, and the first date that would be available for a public caucus is February 23rd.
Sit, excuse me, fourth order, citizens' participation.
Joan Hoda-Wannitz?
Joan Hoda-Wannitz, city resident and taxpayer. Okay, it's 264 days to November 7th, the general election, and I'm hoping that we get the Arcataz Study on Stormwater cost long before that day. 134 days to June 30th, which is the deadline for the 2016 audit. Hopefully that'll be on time. The hearing on the LST tax, which occurred this past Monday, has anybody got, is any sensing of when the court might issue its decision?
No.
Yeah, that could be worrisome, because sometimes these things hang fire for a long time. Hopefully it won't. I still think you ought to be thinking, and administration should be thinking of a Plan B if worse comes to worse. I looked religiously, day after day, for something on the city council's webpage for the Granicus setup. Is it soup yet?
Not soup yet. Um, it should be. Mrs. Reed met with the IT department today, and next week should be the week.
Okay, all right, be looking. Because that would be an ideal place for you to post things, which might not necessarily be, you know, third-order items, but things like Attorney Shrive's answers with regard to the sewer authority sale. Because I think the, the public has a right to see that information, and then we can decide whether or not it's credible and whether or not there's more questions to be asked. So hopefully, when you get that thing up and running next week, see if you can put those answers on. That would be nice. The RFP for the third-party administrator of the pension fund, still in the pipeline? Yesterday, I went to all the pension board meetings, and I asked each one of the boards the same question. Has there been any dialogue between the boards and the administration with regard to that RFP? Because it seems to me that the pension boards have a bit of expertise in that area, and should take a look at, at what they're putting out for a scope of work. But all, all the boards told me the same thing. They haven't been contacted. So it looks like it's gonna be, um, the administration's call on what they want done, and I'm not sure if that's gonna answer all the problems we have with pensions. You realize we're still waiting for a decision on the double pensions. It's been, what, five months since the last hearings? Waiting on that. Item 5C. If you could during motions, explain exactly what the cooperation agreement is between the University of Scranton and the city. Are we gonna have interns at the police department? Are police officers gonna be taking courses at the university? Exactly what are we talking about? I looked at the backup, and the backup did not give a whole lot of insight on that. Uh, I'm totally in favor of any kind of partnership with any of the universities in the city, but I'd like to know exactly what we're talking about here.
Yeah, I'll explain a little bit about that in fifth. But basically what it is, it's an exchange of information and more or less just a community upkeep program informing, just getting the students and the police on the same page, and also the law enforcement for the University of Scranton. It's an information exchange.
Okay, so there won't be any interns down there, and university isn't offering free tuition to the police officers?
No, there's no financial exchange whatsoever, either side.
Well, that's too bad. There's areas that they, they could expand that. The repair of the fire department headquarters next door, that projected $160,000, do we still have that within that 1.8 million dollars from the parking sale proceeds? Nobody knows? Okay. All right, I'll be back next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Fay Francis?
Fay Francis, Scranton. Are you, do you know when you're gonna find out when the, the money from the sewer authority is going to be dispersed?
As soon as possible.
And we, most of you, will you be approving whatever the mayor wants on this?
It'll be, it'll be decided by the majority of council.
Okay. Mr. Evans, last week, you told Marie Schumacher about the dispersments.
Yes.
But you didn't give her any dispersments. I asked, what were the dispersments?
And, and?
From the garbage fee?
Right, I'll read the answer again.
No, no. No, I know what the answer was. Bozoni told you that it goes into the general fund.
After the check's clear, it goes into the general fund.
Yeah, I wanna know what accounts?
Well, we had a discussion in caucus this evening about that, because I was looking for getting more information, but I was advised by our solicitor, as well as the city solicitor, that we shouldn't discuss that because of the court case.
Oh, that's a good one.
Well, I'm only going by what I was told.
That's a cop-out, because last week you didn't know that, you still didn't give any.
It's not a cop-out.
Wayne, it is. Two weeks ago, when I asked this question, you weren't advised by lawyers not to say anything, and two weeks ago, and last week, I asked you to find out, and you told Marie, you didn't give her one dispersment that I asked, asked and answered, right, Mr. Evans? Asked and answered.
I gave you.
Asked and not answered, again, just like two years of not answering. Wayne, I'm speaking.
You're, you're, no, you're yelling. You're not speaking.
Well, sorry. Let me go like this. Wayne, I asked you to get dispersments, and you didn't, on purpose. You could've, but you chose not to.
On purpose? So I, I didn't get your answer on purpose, that's what you're saying?
Well, if you went to Mr. Bozoni and asked?
I asked Mr. Bozoni, and that's the answer he gave me.
And you didn't say, well, that's not the answer, that's not what a dispersment is?
Fay, the money goes from the special account, and it gets dispersed into the general fund.
In what, what departments, what accounts in that department does it go to?
Into the general fund. No, it just goes into the general fund.
The general fund has all different accounts. I wanna know what accounts the money goes to.
Again, and I asked, I asked my solicitor this evening if I could really answer that question, and we're not able to answer that question.
Isn't that convenient?
I'm sure Mr. Bozoni will have the same answer.
But two weeks ago, when I asked you that question, that wasn't told to you, and to keep it quiet, so you just didn't do it again on purpose.
No one's telling, no one will ever tell me to keep quiet, Fay, that's ridiculous. You know better than that.
No, it's not. I don't know better, because I know you for the last time.
That is really, you know, uncalled for.
You wanna keep talking to me, talking over me?
You've known me longer than that.
It's my turn to talk.
Go ahead.
You haven't answered any questions regarding the garbage fee for the last two years, on purpose. You could've gotten me information in three seconds, and you chose not to. That's very apparent.
That's not apparent at all. That's not even factual.
When I get no answers for two years, it's very apparent.
No, Fay, I've given you answers, but you don't like the answers, so therefore...
The answer, okay, what was, name one dispersment that it went to.
Again, I told you, it goes into the general fund.
The general fund, there's 7,000 accounts in the general fund, which ones did it go into?
Including the general fund ledger, so...
Here we go. Everybody just listen to this. Listen to this spin, Mr. Evans. Constant spin.
Fay, as, as you know, that we, we are the legislative branch, and the business administrator is the executive branch. I asked the business administrator, that was the answer he gave me.
And you, that was good enough for you?
Under the circumstances with the court case, that was good enough for me right now.
Two weeks ago, you didn't even told that, and you still didn't get the answer. People just need to know that you deliberately do not give answers, anything about the garbage fee, because you know if they know the truth, they'll be wild. You even said yourself, it's too much money. We should be getting this money back. Now, back to Billy Courtright. How come you and council aren't doing anything as far as forcing him to help the people in the city of Scranton, like the people in Greenwich? And how about the, the people in Greenwich that have the hole in their yard, the Youngs? There's money in the budget, the emergency fund. Why isn't that money being spent to fix their yard? The Meadowbrook Creek, Creek belongs to the city. So that, and they're saying it, the city's saying it doesn't? That's a lie.
The reason why nothing's happening is it can't get an agreement between Mr. Young and the city to get people on his property. That's, that's what the holdup is, right now.
Well, that's not necessarily true.
Mr. Young is trying to protect his property rights.
Mr. Young would like the city to take care of this, I'm sure.
But he would also, he also, he also would like to have a, a protection for himself on his property. That's what the holdup is right now.
Well, I'll check into that.
But ask Mr. Young, he'll tell you.
I will, I will, I, because I don't know all the facts, but I just know that Meadowbrook Creek does belong to the city.
We, we made arrangements to have an emergency declaration declared. The money was set aside, and right now, we, right now, we can't get the two parties together to agree on how we can get equipment onto that property.
But I'm sure the Youngs know what you're talking about.
I'm sure, and I, I agree with you, yes, they do.
And I'm sure whatever they're saying is pretty fair, and I'm sure the city, what Mayor Courtright is saying is not fair. And I'd like to know, how come you, Mr. Gahn, are the only one that speaks the truth about Mayor Courtright? And Mr. Evans, you don't, Mr. Wexler, you don't, Mr. Rogan, you don't, and Tim, I don't, you never say too much either.
Thank you.
Bill, if you get a chance, I'd like any answers to that question sometime, and I appreciate all the things that you say.
Christine Patrick?
Hi, my name is Christine Patrick, and I've been working in pediatrics at Guy Singer Community Medical Center for eleven and a half years. I'm here tonight because I wanna share some deep concerns about staffing at CMC and how this impacts the greater Scranton community. I'm in the Nurses Union, and we have been fighting for improved staffing at CMC, but the management has refused to fix this problem. Right now, we're facing a staffing crisis at our hospital. We never have enough nurses to be able to do our jobs and provide the patients with the care that they deserve. This is a life-or-death situation. In the emergency room, nurses are taking up to six patients. Standard is three patients. This leads to medical errors, falls, injuries, and an incredibly dangerous environment for our patients. There's a wealth of research that shows safe staffing levels leads to less injuries, less mistakes, shorter stays, and less deaths. I wanna, I wanna be able to do everything needed for my patients. Every nurse at CMC could tell you a horror story of being assigned too many patients. Mistakes get made, patients get injured, and people die. For any of you whoever, who have ever been admitted to CMC, I don't think this will come as a surprise. You face incredibly long waits, and your nurse barely has time to spend at your bedside. I wanna, I wanted to become a nurse to help people. I love nursing, and I wanna be able to provide the best care possible for my patients. But when I have too many patients, it's impossible to provide that level of care. We are so short-staffed that management has been illegally mandating nurses to stay way past their shifts. That means that a nurse who has already worked her eight or 12-hour shift, often with no breaks, is forced to stay another few hours. It's absolute, it's absolutely illegal to mandate nurses to stay past their shift, but Guy Singer is doing it anyway. Do you want your nurse to be on her 14th hour with no real break? I wouldn't want my family member to be treated that way, and every single patient at CMC deserves better. I'm here to ask for support of city council and the community. Safe staffing levels impact all of Scranton, and I believe that Scranton deserves better. Your family members deserve the best care possible when they come to CMC. That's why we're asking the city council for a resolution in support of safe staffing at CMC. And we're inviting members of the council to attend and speak at our Safe Staffing Saves Lives press conference on March 1st at 4:00 PM outside the hospital. Thank you in advance for your support, and thank you for everything you do for our community.
Thank you.
One, just one comment.
Yes.
I will definitely speak at that press conference.
Wonderful.
I have a one-year-old and a three-month-old, so I know how important nurses are, and if it wasn't for the nurses in that room, I would've hit the floor and, and passed out. But you guys have an important job, and thank you for coming and speaking tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gerald Hetman?
Good evening, council. Gerard Hetman from Lackawanna County Commissioner's Office. To begin this evening, the Lackawanna County Department of Economic Development now has funding available for winter emergency home repairs. These repairs covered include window replacement, roofing work, chimney repair, plumbing, and other services as reviewed upon request. Interested parties must be current on all property taxes, have a valid homeowner's insurance policy, and must meet income eligibility guidelines. For more information, contact Laura in our Department of Economic Development at 570-963-6830, extension 1373. Second, Penn State Extension is now offering their Serve Safe Food Safety Certification Course for food service workers. The classes are held at Penn State Worthington, Scranton on February 23rd and March 2nd. Successfully passing the course meets the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture's requirements for food safety certification. The cost is $175. Registration deadline is tomorrow, February 17th. You can register online at www.foodsafety.psu.edu, or call Nicole at 570-421-6430, or email Nicole at NMD5140@psu.edu. Third, the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging is offering assistance with completing the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue's Property Tax and Rent Rebate forms. To qualify, seniors must be aged 65 or older, widows or widowers must be aged 50 or older, and persons with disabilities age 18 or older. Income limits are $35,000 for homeowners and $15,000 for renters for qualify with assistance with the rebate forms. To learn more, contact Howard McIntosh at 570-290-0578, or 570-961-1950. And last but not least, just a reminder, while we still have snow, and if we get any more snow during this winter season, our sledding hill at McDade Park is open to the public for use. And this is an area that we've had set up now, I think, the fourth year running that we've had this in place. In the past, folks used to go to McDade Park, and if you go to the area on the left as you drive through, after the turn for the coal mine tour and the anthracite museum, just in back of the 9/11 memorial, there's that big hill. People used to sled down there, and it was prohibited in the past, but for several years running, we've built a, I guess you'd call it a safe area there with barricades, and it's designed and engineered to allow for safe sledding. So it's open for public use during regular park hours, dawn to dusk, seven days a week. We just ask that visitors obey all posted park rules when they visit to do their sledding. And that's all we have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Morgan?
Good evening, council. The first thing I have here is, I appreciate these nurses coming in here today. You know, I lost one of my children to medical malpractice, and I do know that the healthcare system is broken in this country, but I guess you can't expect politicians to make any changes because I don't think they see reality. And we have a lot of problems in this country, but for some reason, I don't know, I just think we elect the wrong people. And, you know, I'm really troubled about the upcoming election, because we definitely need a replacement for every office, the councilman and the mayor in the city of Scranton. It's just mind-boggling, the stuff that takes place here. I find the whole system to be corrupt. That's my opinion. I've come here a long time, but the most troubling thing is how scared the people are of their own government, and they aren't willing to throw these people off us. Because, you know, for a city to be in distress status for over 25 years, it's mind-boggling. And for the debt the city's incurred, and the lack of leadership the city has, and the decline it has gone through, and all the millions and millions of dollars pumped into the downtown, now we've got a new partner for the downtown. And, you know, the truth of the matter is that we've gone through such a steep population decline, and the people we elect just can't seem to get it, that it's not important what kind of suit you wear or blouse. It's what's going on in your head, and whether you respect the people who elect you or you don't. And there's no answers coming from this council. And Mr. Wexler, you know, I don't know if arrogance is your major thing in life, or just total disrespect for the people who've elected you, but it's very apparent that the rest of the council agrees with your demeanor. And, I don't know, I find it very troubling. I find it troubling that we've sold, sold off the sewer authority, and I think the people in the city don't really realize how bad a decision that really was. And for Mr. Evans to be a businessman and to have signed on to that, and for the council president to not agree with it, and yet to introduce it, is troubling. But, you know, the other thing I have here is that, you know, we have a sewer authority, we have a director at the sewer authority. I just really can't see any need for that, because all the debts and everything that the sewer authority was responsible for comes now to the city. So I just don't understand why his position even is there. And as far as the board itself, I can't see that either. I mean, it's just ridiculous. It's just another frivolous waste of money. It's just, it's really unbelievable. And, you know, the LST tax and, that, they brought that judge here for a reason. Okay, and, and I really think that if it goes the wrong way, there has to be an appeal done to the higher court, because in the end, the high court is gonna have to overturn the lower court, because law is gonna have to stand somewhere. And for the city to keep just pounding the hell out of the residents in one layer of taxation after another, I mean, the residents really haven't had an opportunity to understand just what's going to happen with the storm water collection system, and for the council to allow the sale of an authority without removing the funds necessary from the rate to maintain the storm system, even though it was built into the rate, just goes to prove how incompetent Scranton's elected government is. Because the money to maintain the storm water collection system was built into that rate. And we just keep chasing silly, silly things. We're gonna take over the Army Reserve Center? I really think the city should really look into selling City Hall, downsizing government to a level that's almost beyond the comprehension of the average Scrantonian. Because we have a very, very, very serious debt problem, and we need to remove the mayor, the council, and every elected official. And it's not gonna happen overnight, but something has gotta happen in this city before there's nothing left. And really, there is nothing left now. And the retirees that just lost this hearing in court, they need to appeal. Because somebody needs to ask, what responsibility did the city have to make sure that those funds were there and it was solvent? That's a question.
Ron Elman?
Hello, council. In yesterday's paper, I noticed an obituary for a local gentleman that was formerly in the Flying Tigers. That, that during World War II was a limited, the elite of the elite. I was very fortunate to, I've known one for years. Our servant's a swimming pool in Los Angeles, Robert Prescott, who was, at that time, he was president of Flying Tigers Airlines. Now, you people are not gonna believe this, but I'm telling you the absolute truth. This man had an unbelievable hatred for me. He, he, he'd go into a rage, and he hated me so much, he wouldn't fire me. And this went on for years. I, I don't know how I got under his skin so much. Well, enough for Robert Prescott. Now, allow me to say something about our esteemed newspaper, and letters to the editor that I read every day from Patrick McKenna's, I guess, responsibility. I feel about him like Robert Prescott felt about me. It seems this newspaper just can't wait to print the repetitive hate-filled, extreme leftist agenda, week after week, every day, it's in there. One or the other of them writes the same stuff over and over. They just won't let go, just a bunch of losers. But yesterday, I believe it was yesterday, there was a, to me, it was a very disturbing letter comparing our president to Adolf Hitler. I didn't vote for Obama, and I didn't like him, but when he was elected, I always respected him as our president. And, and I'd feel the same way if someone had said the same thing about Mr. Obama. You don't, you don't compare an elected leader to Adolf Hitler. And I don't care what party he's in, I don't care who it is, that we have a bunch of over-the-hill has-beens yelling for the White House to be bombed. It's just, it just doesn't seem to stop. It seems to get worse. There's, people aren't protesting, they're rioting. Those fools in California, my cousin teaches at the university in Berkeley, they burned down their library. Now, the state's gonna have to build a library. What sense is there in that? That's what they, that's how their, their brain seems to go. That's what they, that's how their brain seems to go. I think it was completely unnecessary for the Times to print such useless dribble from some loser that just won't give up, that his agenda is, just keeps going against I have some other things to say, but I don't need to alienate anybody else, I guess. This was a, I've talked to so many people that have told me, they mail in intelligent written letters that are never printed. Your phone, where's my letter? Oh, we must have lost it or misplaced it. That's censoring. Censoring is the direct enemy of a newspaper, and that's what, that's what Mr. McKenna does over and over. I got into some words with him when they were building the high school. He told me, never submit another letter. That's censoring me. He's afraid of my letters? This has been going on, what, 15 years since the high school? That's why, I don't understand it, but I've written letters that he's caught. What are you going to do? Thank you.
Andy Sprague, this is the Scrantonians. Well, the sewer authority did make a headline, the cost of the lawyers. But people don't realize, that money is coming into the city. But yet they turned their back on the parking authority. That money is going out from the city. And I estimate it to be close to $200 million we lost on this deal. First of all, we gave NDC $28 million in the form of a lease. That's a lease we're responsible for. And then we arranged for him to borrow on that lease. And then we turned about $30 million, added on to that. And then there's the lawyer's cost. Then there's the parking. Parking fees and parking revenue and fines amounted to about $3,000 a year. Over 40 years, that's another $120 million gone down the drain. And then we get into the parking leasing of spaces in the parking garage. No one were ripping spaces down on their existing parking. And then that's $4.1 million gift. And then we turned around and sold a garage that was built at the same time as the mall for $1 added cost. And then the worst part about it, I never found out who's responsible for the $300,000 a year we have to give to the mall owners. You add them all up, and it's over $200 million lost from the city treasury over the years. And this is what they did to us. And you cannot sit there and say this was a great deal for the city. Just look at the total cost. I don't know how you looked at it. Must have had blinders on. You had to have blinders on. And then the nerve to say this was the best deal the city can get. What was the other deals that was offered? This is the worst deal the city can get. Plus, it's a nonprofit. I don't know how they can even be a nonprofit. They certainly are going to make money, and they sublet out. I don't know if the sub person that runs the garage is a nonprofit. No one ever said that. We know NDC is a nonprofit, but then they leased it out. Is that leasing a nonprofit too? We don't know. I won't know until I start looking at the financial reports for people getting elected. That money's going to turn and decide, the lighting turned in. Did we need lighting? Yeah, we did, but not at this time. There was nothing wrong with the sodium vapor lights that we had in. I know they said 10 years, they'll pay for themselves, but we haven't got 10 years of financial liability left in the city. What are you going to do? How often could you go to the well? There's a limit to how much water's in that well. I don't know how you can do what you did. I don't know how you can sit there and then run on that. I know the family will support you, but the people won't. Thank you.
I'm happy to learn that it wasn't my error that I could not get the backup to the agenda tonight. And did you say, Mr. Gahn, that we'll be available next week?
That's what the IT department told us, yes.
Thank you. And will that, we won't have to download the whole thing, because?
No, it'll be-
It'll be each item separately?
Yeah, it'll be similar to what the county does.
Okay, thank you. During motions, may we all learn what is holding up the double pension subpoenas? And a point of clarification, item 7A last week, the Sorenti Memorial Army Reserve. Are we purchasing the entire, approximately almost two acres, 1.93 acres? And if so, will we, will we be purchasing that on an as-is basis?
Well, that wasn't part of the purchase yet. That still hasn't happened yet.
Well, you authorized something last week.
It was just-
What did you authorize?
The grant and also the continuation of using the property. It's allowing the city to use the property, it's almost like a lease, you know, a dollar lease. But the purchase will come down at a later time.
The purchase is still in the BRAC Commission with the federal government?
Well, I understand if we're not buying it, it's with the Army, yes. Okay, so we're not buying it, we're just going to use it. So it's a rent?
Yeah, well, I don't know if there's even a transaction-
Well, maybe next week, could you tell us what the legal agreement is with the BRAC for utilization of that property? Well, the US Army, actually, yes. Thank you. And Mr. Evans also, well, I've got you. Last week, I asked that you go to the single tax office and find out how much we have received on business privilege and mercantile tax from the, all of the bed and breakfast?
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to do that, sorry.
Pardon?
I didn't get a chance to get that done yet, sorry.
Would you try again?
Yeah, I won't be here next week, but I'll try to get it for you.
Not just the dollars and cents, how many there are and how many are actually paying that is what's desired. While I appreciate the inclusion in the Scranton Sewer Authority questions of the costs and fees, I think you gentlemen missed a lot, and I hope that my right-to-know requests that I submitted last Friday will, will help to, help to clear up some things. Unless you can all answer them during motions tonight, that would also be time-efficient. There are certain items that have to be completed before we can shut that baby down. And I don't know why you didn't specifically ask. I know some of them are, are the, what, how much, well, I'll go down the list of what I asked for. The amount of the proceeds from the Scranton Sewer Authority asset sale that have been placed in escrow by account. Do we know how many escrow accounts there are, and how much is in each?
Well, one account is for $12 million, that's the account-
Well, I don't need that, do you have the total list?
No, I don't want to, yeah.
Okay, okay. Or if you want to do it during motions, but yes, if you have that. And I'd like to know the amount of the city's share of the asset sale transaction costs. The complete list of properties with pending rights of way settlement that are still open. All, and then I think that should be with, in the monthly report, how many they've worked off every month, or however often you're going to get reports, because those all have to be completed before it can shut down. The list of the open bills at closing and what is current as of tonight, actually. A copy of the written correspondence from the seller to the buyer in compliance with section 9.03 of the asset purchase agreement, which to notify the buyers of representations and warranties that have changed from the time that document was signed. Now, Kara Seitzinger was here last week, and she also talked about this. And while we could have done it any time, the terms of the agreement were that it be provided to the buyer within three days before the closing. So that should have been, what, the 26th of December? So either Mr. Shrive didn't tell his boss, which I find unlikely, or the mayor knew. And I'm rather surprised that all of you, when you read through that asset purchase agreement, didn't note that and ask to be included as a carbon copy on when those transactions took place. Because then we would have known what was happening a long time before the big whoopsie. I'll finish up on the list next week, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Fifth order, 5A motions. Mr. Perry?
Thank you. Yes, I have a couple of things. I just want to touch on a couple of agenda items real quick, and I have one comment at the end. 5B, which is coming before us tonight, is a justice assistant grant, or the JAG, for the smart policing initiative. That's going to go to Chief Graziano's Alternative to Arresting Attic Program, which we touched on, I believe a couple of weeks ago, the chief was in a caucus and explained to us that there are federal funds available to us to apply for, where instead of putting addicts in jail, we can get them the help they actually need, where they could assign a waiver to come clean in lieu of an arrest, which I believe that's, that's definitely progressive thinking and the way to go. Instead of putting an addict in jail where there's absolutely no help for them, we can, we can actually make the steps and get them clean is really what they need. 5C, which was touched on tonight, I'll just give a little bit more information on 5C, which is an agreement between the city and university. I'll just read a little bit right here. "The university and city wish to enter an agreement to foster academic cooperation and exchange of information, scholarship and learning opportunities for students and police officers. Based on principles of mutual benefit, the parties will promote the exchange of information, scholarship, and learning opportunities, as well as the exchange of faculty and scholars along with other inter-party collaborations, including joint research projects, programs, circular development grants, and exchange of academic materials." It's basically what that's, all that sums up is a cooperative agreement between the police and the university to use the assets that the city has and the university has to make our city safer. And to get not only our police continue involved in the university, but to get the university involved in our city. It's going to be a five-year agreement with the possibility to renew five years after Other thing, 7D, we had Solicitor Boils in our office today to talk about Remedy Analytics, which is a company that uses a software to help drive down the cost of our prescription costs within the city of Scranton. Now, how the program works, this company's going to work for us at zero cost. Their benefit of this is any savings we get as the city is going to come back to them with a 15% take on the savings that we get. If they don't save us a thing, they don't get paid at all. So it's really up to them to do their diligence, use the software that they have, and push, push the savings towards us. Based on the company, they, right now, they have 60 companies as clients. And based on the numbers that they ran, they expect a ballpark figure of a 10% to 30% annual savings on what we have right now. And this in no way is going to change any of the benefits that we have to our city employees. City employees' benefits will not change with their prescription costs. It's just a simple software program that's going to run some algorithms to help us get the very best price on prescriptions around. The comment I have is for the nurses from CMC that came in. If you want to talk about something that's going to get me involved, well, let's talk about, let's talk about nurses. My mother worked as a nurse for the better part of five decades, as well as raising six children. And let me tell you, I know all about nurses being understaffed, overworked, and they are without a doubt the unsung hero of the medical industry. And I don't think there's anybody here that's going to disagree with that. When you go in the hospital, who's the first person you see? Who's the last person you see? It's the nurses. Who are those that do follow-up care? It's the nurses. They are out there working as hard as they possibly could just because they got in that industry to do good and help others. So if there is absolutely anything I can do, and I'm sure I share that sentiment with the rest of my colleagues to help them, you know, I have all my chips in the middle of the pile for that. There's absolutely nothing I wouldn't do to help that nursing industry. It's just, it's just a tough, it's a very tough job to begin with, and then when you're understaffed, I understand full-heartedly, I know. So again, they are going to have a rally on March 1st at 4:00 PM in front of CMC, just to get their word out and just to get, just to get everybody's understanding of what they go through on a daily basis. And for those of you who, who may not be close to somebody that works in that field as a nurse, it would be good to show up and just kind of get their understanding of what they go through, because they're there to help us, and we should be there to help them when they need it. That's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Rogan?
Yes, a couple of brief items. First, I was, had the honor of attending this Southside Neighborhood Association meeting last night. They did have some changes in their leadership, there are some new members that came on board, working on a number of citizens' requests that came out of that meeting. But it was very productive, and I would like to thank our police chief, Carl Graziano, for attending as well, as well as two of our beat officers, who were very helpful with a number of citizens' issues, as well as a number of questions that came from members of the association. A number of the items I'm going to talk about were already mentioned by Mr. Perry, which is-
Sorry about that.
Unfortunately-
I gave you a little bit of leeway last week. I got, I let you go first, but unfortunately, I got you this week.
Unfortunately, it's a common theme, but I'm glad that we're in agreement. So I'd much rather be reinforcing the points that you're making than, you know, than disagreeing. Regarding CMC, I agree wholeheartedly with the comments that were made. Unfortunately, over the last year to two years, I spent quite a bit of time in CMC with my father was sick, my grandmother. And I will have to say, anyone who has been in the hospital or has a relative who has been in the hospital knows that the nurses do probably 90, 95% of the work that you see. Unfortunately, they're not compensated anywhere near as well as the doctors, who are in and out in a two-minute brief visit. And it's the nurses that are doing all of that care. And the idea of working 14 hours on your feet, working with patients, I would hate to be the last patient on a nurse's 14-hour shift without a break. So I would like to mention my support for the nurses, for their union, for everything they're pushing for. And I also will try to attend that press conference if my schedule is available on March 1st. This is the first I'm hearing of the press conference, but I do want to say that without nurses, the medical field would not even exist. They really are the backbone of our hospitals, and they deserve a thank you for everything they do to keep the people safe and to try to, try to keep us healthy. The double pension issue was brought up regarding our subpoenas at the podium. Attorney Menor, I hate to put you on the spot, but if, would you be able to give an update on the double pension subpoenas?
I can't. We have not received a briefing schedule or an argument schedule from the court administrator. I did call down, gosh, it might be a week and a half ago or two weeks ago, and I didn't have an answer then, so, and I still have not received that.
Thank you. And for those in the audience and those that are watching, please don't think that this is a forgotten-about issue. Attorney Menor can attest, and I feel that sometimes I'm annoying him with multiple calls per week asking the status of the double pension investigation. But it is something that is very important to this council. There are millions of dollars missing out of our pension funds because of this scandal, and we are still working to do everything we can to get to the bottom of it. And I have much more to say on pensions in the coming weeks. Also brought up by Mr. Perry is the pre-arrest intervention- Also brought up by Mr. Perry is the pre-arrest intervention program. Chief Graziano did brief us on this quickly at a caucus a few weeks ago, and he actually did explain it a little bit more in-depth at the Neighborhood Association meeting I attended last night. And it really is a great program to try to help out people who have made a mistake. It's not a program for repeat offenders. It's not a program for violent criminals. It is a program for first-time offenders and first-time offenders only. I think the chief said it was 80% of property crimes within the city of Scranton are because of drug use or somehow related to drugs. So I know there's been a number of efforts by the district attorney's office, by other groups, really to crack down on drug use within our community, and our police chief is a very forward-thinking individual. And really, there are only a few other cities in the United States that have this type of program. And I firmly believe if people deserve a second chance, now a third and a fourth, it wouldn't go that far. But everyone makes a mistake, and I certainly hate to see somebody's life ruined over a small possession charge or something of that nature. It's just not fair, and many times discriminatory. So this program really will help the community. I am very excited, the chief is excited about it, and we're applying for this grant. And he did state that even if we don't get the grant, we are going to look to do this program, maybe in a smaller, scaled-back version. But it is something that really could give people a chance to turn their life around if they've made, made a couple of mistakes. And again, I do want to reiterate, because I know there are people out there that will say this, this is not for repeat offenders. Repeat offenders are going to be arrested, locked up, and prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law.
And not necessarily that this program wouldn't put someone in jail as well. This is a commitment to come clean. So if they sign that commitment to come clean and they don't honor their end of the bargain, they're going to jail.
And that's a great point that Mr. Perry brought up. It's not, it's not a get out of jail free card, but it is an opportunity. So it's, again, I think this is something that council is fully going to support, and we're anxious to see this program get put into action. The prescription savings legislation was also brought up tonight. We did have a caucus, a brief caucus regarding this with some questions that members of council have had. The program, as was mentioned, is at no cost to the city. There will be savings, and this firm will only receive compensation as a percentage of savings. I think it's a good idea, I actually think it's a great idea. My only concern, and it's not concern with this legislation specifically, but my only concern is that this is a function that could be or should be provided or paid for by our broker of record for our health insurance. That's something I think needs, that needs to be used as a negotiating tool when that comes up. Because this is being done by an outside firm, the commission for our broker of record maybe should be reduced, saving the taxpayers some money. But that being said, I will vote yes on this proposal. There is a chance of substantial savings, so I think we need to save every penny we can. So I will be voting, voting yes on that legislation. Finally, we did receive a letter regarding handicap signs within the city. A number of years ago, an ordinance was passed that required people to register their handicap signs. Now, the intention of the ordinance, I do believe, was, it was a good intention, but the consequences haven't been exactly what we were looking for. The reason why this was instituted, and I will add for the record, when this was voted on a number of years ago, I did oppose it for a number of different grounds, but there are people who are receiving fines for not registering their handicap signs. Again, it's a very small fee, but for a person who's handicapped to begin with and is having difficulties getting around, being able to go to the police station and take care of this paperwork, can sometimes be much more challenging for somebody who's handicapped than an able-bodied person. I hope this is something that the city can reconsider. There does have to be a way to track handicap license plates within the city, because you'll see it on some blocks where there's signs that are up for many years that aren't being used. So there does need to be a tracking system, but I firmly believe, as I have when I voted against this fee, that charging a fee to handicap residents in the city isn't something that we should be doing. And I'm hopeful that we could work with, with our chief and the law department to find another way to track these license handicap placards without charging a fee. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. I discussed the status of the rental registration program with Tom Alessi this morning. He's actually the point person for the program. During the process of merging various lists and eliminating the duplicates, the plan is to get the mailers out and bills out by March 1st. That's where we're at with that. Attorney, or Councilman Gahn and myself attended a meeting today with Smart City Media, very innovative program that's popping up all over, all over the country, specifically Kansas City, Missouri is one of the first to do it. They have kiosks that provide information, advertising opportunities for small businesses, upcoming events throughout the community. They're looking at possibly putting as many as 80 screens downtown in the form of kiosks and attached to light poles. It may generate as much as $158,000 per year for the city's coffers, so that's a very positive, and I think they'll be positive all around, and I know Councilman Gahn will probably touch on that as well. The, about the square meeting, first of all, I have to say it was, I felt it was successful. The information was received, and what we've been asking for all along, and we did receive an additional commitment, which I had requested, to receive monthly reports of all the expenditures and receivables, the authority, for the authority beginning in March. And I asked that it be dated back to the closing date. That's something that I think Ms. Schumacher mentioned, that, you know, we'd like to see everything from closing date currently and then from a, from a going-forward basis beginning in March. But I'd like to give some perspective of why I agreed to the meeting in the first place. As someone who's spent 40 years in the private sector, working for a Fortune 500 company, and as an independent contractor and a small business person, I rarely see these things through a political prism. So I think that was the case in this case. I looked at it simply as an opportunity to get answers to our questions in a timely manner and without delay. And being realistic, this is what that approach, that approach was. I felt it was wishful thinking that a write-to-know letter and subpoenas would actually not be met with delays. And I didn't want to, at this point, try to create an animosity with the new director without giving him a chance to get us the information that we wanted. And all the questions were posed by all five councilmen. Additionally, I felt all along that it was sort of wishful thinking that Mr. Shrive would appear for a public caucus. And in fact, during our meeting, I asked him point-blank, and he declined. So contrary to popular belief, we cannot just wave a magic wand and make someone appear before us. There is a process, and not everybody wants to come before us for that type of public scrutiny. Now, should he? Certainly, and I think President Wexler mentioned before that, that was, a letter was sent asking him to do just that, so hopefully he will come. Also at that meeting, I asked if the press could come in, and of course, that was declined as well. But at the end of the day, Councilman Wexler and myself, we're in that meeting for answers, in a framework for answers, and I feel we achieved that goal. And even if that means politically I have to take a public relationship every now and then and maybe even get an occasional cartoon in the paper in the search for the information that we think is important. And that's fine with me. I never really thought I was much of a politician anyway, so maybe that's a good thing. On another matter, I'd like to reinforce my opinion and position on some issues that I feel may need some clarity, because time is kind of buying some of these issues, and we hear different things that sometimes isn't exactly true of where we stand on a particular issue. On the expansion of the Keystone landfill, I was the first councilman to bring this up to my colleagues, and I continue to be on the record against the expansion. On the Lichee line, I have repeatedly and consistently been on the record as wanting to get this before a judge for a ruling. While I am disappointed that city council could not take a more active role in this, we made every effort to prod the administration to take a more active role, and they did not. And we're hopeful that others, that it will take up that original stated goal, and we support, or at least I support, their goal in those efforts. On the Young property in the Holmner yard, I've had numerous conversations with the Youngs. In fact, I talked with Mr. Young last night. I have visited the site and brokered a deal with the administration for the funding to solve the problem. Sadly, it's still tied up with attorneys, but not because of a lack of effort from the city council. And on the Airbnb issue, my position has been the same right along. The 24-year-old zoning code needs to be rewritten and replaced. There are too many uses like this and others that didn't exist 24 years ago on our silent in our code. It is my opinion, and the opinion of many others, that when a use is not specifically addressed in the zoning code, it has a better chance to be ultimately approved than denied. So a new zoning code would absolutely protect the neighbors far more than a dated ordinance in existence for 24 years. So with that said, sometimes our positions get a little muddled and sometimes taken out of context, so I think it's important once in a while to reaffirm exactly where we stand on those issues. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahn?
Yes, thank you. Just a few items. First of all, the 1700 block of Elizabeth Street, got a couple complaints about a foreclosed home there with windows that are broken, and rental property issues. So we did send that, that to the licensing and inspection department. Also, there's a continuing problem on Maple and Cedar Avenue with snowy and icy sidewalks, and that is the main thoroughfare for the students at South Intermediate. Very dangerous situation. There's also a condemned home across the street from this school that I'd like the licensing and inspections department to take a look at. Hopefully, it's on the demolition list, so we'll check that out. The last few weeks, as I've been attending the neighborhood meetings, really, since I've been on council, the street sign issue has come up time and time again. We did reach out to our DPW director, and we do, actually do not keep an inventory of our street signs. I think that we need to make this a priority, whether we look for grant money to replace every faded and damaged street sign in the city. It is a major public safety issue. One of the neighborhoods that I'd like to zero in on is the Hill section. There is a major, major problem with the lack of street signs in the Hill. So we do need to address it, I think, and I would urge the DPW and the administration to come up with a program, a way to inventory the signs that we put out and that we currently have, because we do pay for them, the taxpayers pay for them. So I think that is important. Onto the, Mr. Evans had mentioned the meeting that took place with Mr. Shrive between Councilman Wexler and Councilman Evans. And Councilman Evans mentioned that he wasn't looking at this through a, a political prism. I wasn't either, but I am, I am still opposed to the way that that meeting went down, for the simple fact that I was looking at it from a public service perspective. We are all public officials up here, and I did not think it was appropriate for two councilmen to go and meet with the executive director of the sewer authority in a closed meeting, in private, without the press, even though I'll give Mr. Evans credit, he did invite the press, and I don't think it was their intention to hide anything, but the appearance looks pretty terrible to me. We all have questions and concerns about this deal, and the fact that it wasn't in an open meeting and it wasn't able to be seen by the public and we all weren't able to ask questions is troubling to me. So I don't look at this issue as a politician, I look at it as a citizen, as somebody who represents the public, and it should have been held in council chambers in a public caucus. Bottom line, end of story. Onto the legal fees of the sewer authority. In my opinion, they seem excessive and outrageous, and I have additional questions that I would like answered based on the information that we received from Mr. Shrive. First of all, I'd like all invoices in relation to the legal fees to see a description of the time and service that were rendered, and I'd like to know what the hourly rates were from each law firm or lawyer that was involved. I'd also like to know, are there legal costs? Are those legal costs inclusive of any fees related to the bond transaction? And what were the fees related to any bond transactions, and who was the bond counsel on the deal? Also, the $1.6 million that was given to Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney, I'd like to know if this was just a payout for the firm, or were there other attorneys who received a cut of this for services that they performed for Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney? I'd also like to know what role the city special counsel, Ned Abrahamson, played in the sewer deal and his firm, Abrahamson, Conneboy, and Abraham, Amson. He received $200,000. I'd like to know how much money that law firm has made from the city, doing work from the city, since January 1st, 2014. I have also posed numerous questions, sent by myself on behalf of Mrs. Reed, about the hiring of Mr. Shrive as the executive director and attorney for the Scranton Sewer Authority. And I would like those questions answered. The public has a right to know this information, and I know Mr. Evans and Mr. Wexler met with Mr. Shrive, but I just don't understand what the meeting was about. Answer the questions and just give us the information. And I think we all should have had an opportunity to be there and ask any questions that we are so passionate about. So again, I find these fees extraordinary, outrageous. I would like additional information on them, and I find them particularly extraordinary in light of the fact that, you know, these are fees that are coming from the seller. And usually, I think in these type of deals, the buyer has to do their due diligence and usually has a high cost. So I would like more information on this, and hopefully, we can receive this by next week. And that is all I have for this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahn. Touching on the, the events of the, the meeting that we had on Friday, and each person that preceded me talked about how they, how they approached it. I approached it as the president of Scranton City Council. My job as president of Scranton City Council is to get questions answered for my colleagues and also get questions answered for the citizens. In January, the questions that were answered were prepared by all five councilmen. There were no additional questions raised. We, we sent the letter. Those were the questions that were asked by council. The reason why I wanted to have a meeting and sit down with Mr. Shrive is to make sure that all the questions were answered. I asked Councilman Evans to come with me because he is the finance chair. We sat down with Mr. Shrive, went through the questions one by one. He answered them, he answered to us verbally. We each took notes. Then we requested that all of his answers be put into writing, which he did. We could have skipped the meeting if we thought that Director Shrive would have just mailed us an answer back. We sent, we sent the question out in January to Attorney Conneboy, and if, if the letter was just returned to us with answers, we would have no need for this meeting. But as my job as president of council, I had to make sure that those questions were going to get answered. I did not agree with the route going with a Freedom of Information Act, because the clock would still be ticking on that, and we had no answers. Same thing with the subpoena. Subpoenas are a long drawn-out process that we're seeing when we sent a subpoena to requesting information from the state police. We still have an answer on that. Yesterday afternoon, we requested that the answers be provided to us by Wednesday. The answers were provided to us yesterday afternoon, I think around 4:20. Mrs. Reed scanned them, sent them to all councilmen as soon as they became available. As soon as they became available to me, I provided them to the Scranton Times so they could start digesting the information and getting it out there as soon as possible. Later on in the evening, Attorney Shrive sent me some further information that I immediately distributed to all councilmen and also distributed again to the Scranton Times. Our role in this was to get the answers, and as Mr. Evans said, we did take a little bit of, of political heat. But I give my comments to Mr. Cole, because he drew a slender Joe Wexler, which I thought was, was very good. As Mr. Gahn had said, though, there's more questions from the information that we got, and this is going to be an ongoing process with this. But you have to remember that the sewer authority is still in existence. It has a director that's responsible for, for, excuse me, answering questions. On February 24th is their first meeting. It'll be at 4:00 PM. And for all council people, all citizens, all concerned parties, that meeting is open to the public, and questions should be entertained. Back when the issue first came out with the easements, I attended a Scranton Sewer Authority meeting and asked questions. So it's, it's not the responsibility of council, per se, to get these answers. We try to do them as best we can, but that does not relieve the sewer authority or Mr. Shrive from still having to answer questions from the public. Like I said, I, I'm happy that we were able to get the answers. I wasn't sure how they were going to be presented to us, but we got a lot of information that's been put out there, and it's a starting point now to get more... been put out there, and it's a starting point now to get more satisfactory answers and responses from the Sewer Authority. This evening, we heard from the CMC nurses. They were here, I invited them to come and speak. I met with them a few weeks ago to understand what their situation is, and since my colleagues were anxious to support them, I do have a letter that they had sent to us in preparing support for them, so we will make that available if councilmen are either interested in doing a group letter or a separate letter. We do have a letter prepared for that, and we can get that out this week. In regard to the double pension issue, we have had some contact with Solicitor Durkin, and he's anticipating some answers on, a resolution on that question within a few In terms of what Mr. Gohin brought up about the problems with the street signs in the city, and we hear the same concerns, we spoke to Director Gallagher last week. We are waiting to see if we are going to get another Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board grant. Last year, we used that to purchase stop signs, and I'm not sure of the cost involved with street signs, but this may be a good starting point for some funding, at least to get an idea on putting together a proposal to replace those signs. And I agree with Mr. Gohin that that's an urgent issue. This evening, concerning the investigation into our pharmacy bills, I'd like to compliment Solicitor Broyles on this. I think she started this as she was in the HR Director previously to this, and I congratulate her for bringing some outside-the-box thinking to our city government. Mr. Evans constantly talks about improving the way that we do business and looking for new ideas, and I would like to congratulate on her for bringing this to us, and even if we saved $500, it was well worth the effort that she put forward. Each week, our meeting starts off with Mrs. Hodawan talking about the audit, so I have some information about the audit here. There are some preliminary dates coming out for our audit, according to Business Administrator Dave Bozoni. Preliminary field work should be done the week of March the 6th. Raney of, for Scranton, has had the books closed on May 31. Final field work should be completed the week of June 5, and the issue with the financial statement should be June the 30th. So it's a very aggressive audit schedule than we had in the past, and I congratulate everyone that's working on that. This week, PennDOT has entered into some agreements for some bridge work that's going to be done in the city. There's been agreements reached for bridge repair and construction on the West Lackawanna Avenue Bridge, the Elm Street Bridge, and the North Main Avenue Bridge. These agreements will allow PennDOT to begin the design process, excuse me, the design process. Preliminary estimated cost for design and construction is $17,400,000. The city shares about 5% of this, which is $870,000, but we all know how serious the bridge conditions are in our city, and anything we can do to repair that is well worth it.
Could I just make one additional point, just to disagree with you for a second? I disagree with what Mr. Wexler said in this respect. I think it is our responsibility to get these answers to these questions, and I appreciate the fact that the Sewer Authority Board has meetings, but we're the legislative body of the City of Scranton. I shouldn't have to go to a Sewer Authority Board meeting to get answers on anything. I represent the taxpayers and the ratepayers of the city, as we all do, and quite frankly, this whole thing is absurd. It is absolutely absurd. I can't even believe it. And everybody I talk to, when I go to these neighborhood meetings, they bring their sewer bills in, their water bills in. So many people have been upset over this thing, and to add insult to injury, we still don't know how much stormwater management is going to cost. You had two PUC judges say that that should have been a condition of the deal. We have no idea. I've asked for months, what is our stormwater management plan? What procedures, what policies do we currently have in place? Crickets. Maybe they know, maybe they don't know, but nobody has told me so far. So I think it is our responsibility. I mean, someone has to question these things. It stinks. Thank you.
The goal should be the answers, not the questions. If you sit here and wait for somebody to give you an answer, it's not going to come. You have to go to a meeting, if you have to go to an office, if you have to call somebody on the phone, if you have to go to their house. Our goal should be to get the answers, and asking questions and not getting answers doesn't do any good. We got the answers. We got the answers. That's the bottom line on that.
5B for introduction and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application, and if successful, a grant agreement and accept the funds related thereto through the BJA-FY-17 Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant Program Smart Policing Initiative in the amount of $571,847 to implement the Alternative to Arresting Addicts program.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question, I just want to say that I am in full support of this program, and I commend Chief Graziano and the Scranton Police Department for having the foresight to get involved with something as innovative, something that's as collaborative as this program is, and I think it's going to be a major solution to the City of Scranton's drug problem. As I was looking through the backup, some of the things that stick out to me, some of the statistics that were included. The United States makes up only 4.6% of the world's population, but it consumes 80% of its opioids. Opioids cause 58% of overdose deaths in Lackawanna County. 2010 to 2011, there was a 225% increase in the total number of overdose deaths. So I think that this program will save lives through prevention of further drug abuse. And I think in particular, what's particularly noteworthy is the fact that we are going to collaborate with the University of Scranton on a lot of research. So this isn't just going to be a shot in the dark, we're actually going to be able to look at specific hard data, and I think we're going to be able to use those statistical techniques to analyze past and current police reports to clarify the nature of the drug problems and the crime problems in the City of Scranton, and they're going to be able to report those findings to the Scranton Police Department. I've known people that have had drug problems, friends of mine, and who have went to jail, and it doesn't work, because they go to jail, and then they get out and they can't get a job, and they still have a drug problem. So I think this initiative will try to help them recover from that, put them on a different path, and I support this 100%. Thank you.
On the question, I couldn't agree more. Hopefully, this will become a model for other communities to follow, but more than that, I think we've all been impacted by this. You know, I stood with my best friend, one of my best friends, as we buried her, his daughter, and so we've all been extremely affected by this, and I think it's something very, very important that we get ourselves involved with.
All is in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5C for introduction and resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an academic cooperation agreement between the University of Scranton and the City of Scranton to encourage activities, experiences, and processes that facilitate greater understanding and appreciation of crime prevention and policing in the City of Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All is in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5D for introduction and resolution appointment of Om Tim Sina, 2105 Crown Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 1A 505, as a member of the Human Relations Commission effective January 13, 2017. Mr. Tim Sina will be replacing Alexander Lester, who resigned from the board on October 16, 2016. Mr. Tim Sina will fill the unexpired term of Alexander Lester that is scheduled to expire on September 16, 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All is in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5E for introduction and resolution appointment of Larry Bocadori, 2130 Forest Street, apartment number 2, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 1A 504, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Sewer Authority effective February 8, 2017. Mr. Bocadori will be replacing Stuart Renda, who resigned January 20, 2017. Mr. Bocadori will fill the unexpired term of Stuart Renda, whose term is scheduled to expire on December 31, 2017.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? On the question, both candidates have submitted letters of interest to council.
Yes.
All is in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5F for introduction and resolution accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board and approving the certificate of appropriateness to allow emergency repair work for temporary removal and building in kind of sections of the parapet at Scranton Fire Station Headquarters, 518 Mulberry Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All is in favor of introductions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title file of the Council number 87, 2017, and ordinance authorizing the removal of three existing signs in front of 637, 639 Madison Avenue, and installation of an R-7-302 No Parking Symbol Arrow Sign Right, and three R-7-3-1 No Parking Restricted Days Signs with R-8-3HP-1 No Parking Restricted Hours plaque mounted directly below the R-7-3-1 along the Westerly curb line of Madison Avenue, with final locations to be determined in field from R-7-302 sign to Southerly Property Line of, Property Line of Head Start.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A, what is your pleasure?
I moved that Item 6A pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
6B, reading by title file of the Council number 88, 2017, and ordinance amending file of the Council number 126, 2015, and ordinance entitled General City Operating Budget 2016 by transferring $3,000 from account number as noted, Department of Business Administration, Bureau of Administration, OPR, TSFR, Workers' Comp, to account number as noted, Office of the City Clerk, City Council, SVC, and maintenance fee to provide sufficient funding for service and maintenance account through the 2016 budget period.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6B, what is your pleasure?
I moved that Item 6B pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
6C, reading by title file of the Council number 89, 2017, and ordinance amending file of the Council number 126, 2015, and ordinance entitled General City Operating Budget 2016 by transferring $50,000 from account number as noted, Department of Business Administration, Bureau of Administration, OPR, TSFR, Workers' Comp, to account number as noted, Law Department Professional Services account to provide sufficient funding for remaining professional service bills through the 2016 budget period.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6C, what is your pleasure?
I moved that Item 6C pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption File of the Council number 86, 2017, and ordinance closing and vacating portions of South Irving Avenue and Crown Avenue between Saginaw Street and Connell Street.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Goh?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution number 113, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a supplemental reimbursement agreement, number as noted, with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, for the purpose of increasing construction funding for the Rockwell Avenue Bridge project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Goh?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution number 114, 2017, appointment of Daniel E. Kennedy, 1034 Woodlawn Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania, to the position of Director of Human Resources, Assistant Business Administrator, effective February 6, 2017. Ms. Kennedy will be replacing Jessica L. Boyle's Esquire, who took another position with the city.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Goh?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution number 115, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to enter into a master services agreement by and between Remedy Analytics Incorporated, a Delaware corporation, and the City of Scranton to aid the city in analyzing claims data and negotiating contractual language for the city's pharmacy benefits, management services, for the purpose of achieving savings on pharmacy benefits.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7D.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, just on the question, something I didn't add before in motions. I made a request for the cost savings on an ongoing basis, so we can measure the impact of this company in order to determine if we want to continue the services in the future.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Goh?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned.